And before we begin, I'd like to say thank you to Deputy Stewart of the Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department for being here with us tonight, and to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones. Dr. Meyer, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Mr. Braswell, in a second.
Second.
Mr. Blaine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 6-0. Just Ms. Blalack is not with us tonight. Item 2.0, 2.01, Public Hearing. Dr. Martin, would you please give the instructions?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The public hearing on the FY 2016 school budget provides an opportunity for interested staff and members of the public to voice concerns or suggest items to be incorporated into the 2016 school budget. Each speaker is asked to state here's her name and address or voting district. For the record, has five minutes to address the board. During this time, speakers are asked to limit their comments to those about the budget or the budget process. First speaker is Peter Fottenhauer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Shelley, School Board members, Superintendent Baker, other members of the administrative staff. My name is Peter Fottenhauer. I live at 10604 Wakeman Drive, and I am a civics teacher at Ny River Middle School, and I serve as the President of the Spotsylvania Education Association. And tonight, I address you on behalf of our members. Before offering comments about specifics in the superintendent's proposed budget, I want to start with a question you should consider before each and every line of the document in front of you is approved. Ask, does it put kids first? That's what education is all about, after all. When teachers remediate, tutor after school, or reteach, they're putting kids first. When a principal pays the cost for a field trip for a child who can't afford to go, they've put kids first. When our coaches work year-round to condition and improve the skills of their athletes, they put kids first. When teachers are grading papers late at night or on a Sunday afternoon, they put kids first. When teachers persuade prod, nag, and cajole kids into meeting a high standard they don't feel they can meet, they're putting children first. When donors stop by our treasure house at Massaponix and drop off needed toiletry or laundry detergent items for homeless students, they put kids first. When state officials cut K-12 per pupil funding 16% since 2009, when some of them attack the teaching profession and undermine public education, they've put politics first. When the class of 2021 entered kindergarten, Spotsylvania County had approximately the same number of students enrolled as we do this year, but class sizes averaged 18 to 22 students. We received $135 million in state funding based on the standards of quality and $120 million in local funds, plus some federal money to operate our schools, 100% of which were fully accredited. Then came the Great Recession. State funding dropped $29 million over two years and has yet to return to pre-recession levels. It's currently 16% below 2009 levels when you factor in inflation. That translates to about $13 million that Spotsylvania County is not receiving this year that we would have been if the 2010 standards of quality were still in effect. Student enrollment has dropped about 1.6% since 2009, but is projected to rise. Yet, teacher staffing has fallen 9.6% because of 150 staffing cuts through attrition to our classroom teaching force. And somewhere in the midst of all this, the state lawmakers, while our schools were maintaining the quality that led for Education Week Magazine to rank our schools as top five in the nation year after year, made SOL testing more rigorous and imposed more stringent accountability measures. This year, Virginia schools ranked 12th in the Education Week rankings. Could it be that those funding cuts from the state explain that drop and why Spotsylvania County Public Schools has 10 schools accredited in various stages of warning in 2015? The Virginia General Assembly is required by Article 8, Section 1 of the Constitution to, I quote, "ensure an educational program of high quality is established and continually maintained." Unfortunately, legislatures have chosen to rewrite the SOQs to match the funding obligation, the funding available, not to ensure the quality that was provided. Dr. Baker's budget has many things in it to like. There are lower pay-to-participate fees for parents that will help many stakeholders, increasing sponsor and coaching stipends by 5%, our e-RIP program with a 30% one-time bonus payment to potential retirees, and the addition of some staffing positions, including new special ed teachers, bus drivers, and classroom aides. These steps put kids first. But they are just a small step forward on the path to rebuilding what we have lost. We must pick up the pace. At this rate, restoring the $450,000 that's not in my classroom today based on per pupil funding averages will take us six years. That's too long for the current 7th graders at Ny River Middle School to wait. They will be out of high school and hopefully prepared for college by the time we finish rebuilding what was lost at that pace. After years of level funding or less, this budget by comparison is impressive. But make no mistake, we need to use it as a stepping stone. Our Board of Supervisors should put kids first and close the gap that exists with increased local funding until the state begins to put children first. That's why I invite all here to join VEA and PTA members on April 18th in Richmond for a Put Children First Rally. In the Chinese zodiac, it's the year of the horse. In Virginia, we need to make sure that 2015 is the year of the child. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that was the only speaker that signed up?
Is there anyone else that would like to speak for the public hearing on the budget? With that, public hearing is closed. We'll continue now to public comments. Dr. Martin. We have, since we have no instructional highlights, item 3, and no recognitions and awards tonight, item 4, we're moving on to item 5.
The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker's allotted five minutes. We ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute lot expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a love of decorum and mutual respect for one another. There are no speakers signed up on the sheet, but I defer back to you.
Do we have anyone that would like to speak in public comments? Okay, public comments section will be closed. Board members' comments. I'm going to start with Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to address our citizens and also commend Dr. Baker and his staff for the hard work that they have done in the preparation of this budget. I'm really excited for a variety of different reasons. I think this budget, as I alluded to the last time I had an opportunity to speak, addressed strategic operationally and also what I call tactical concerns that we have in operating our school division. Strategically, I am really excited about this budget having, giving us the opportunity to look forward, to be able to do some things in terms of magnet schools, in terms of international backlog program that allow us to be a cutting-edge school division that also sets us apart from other school divisions in the area. And so, I salute Dr. Baker and his staff for being visionary and putting plans into place to allow us to have a strategic advantage. I'm also excited about the opportunity operationally to, with this budget and what it does for us. By allowing ourselves the opportunity to make our substitute teacher pay, for example, much more competitive, it puts us in a better position to hire the very best. A lot of teachers that are substitutes now go to other divisions because the pay, quite frankly, is a little bit higher. And we never have an opportunity to evaluate those teachers in the classroom who are principals who can see firsthand the cream of the crop that's available. So when teaching spots open up, that they would feel inclined to be a part of Spotsylvania County Schools. So I really appreciate the effort that was taken there and understanding that, not only in the short term, that we are fulfilling the need where substitute teachers are in high demand, but also looking in the long term in terms of hiring, you know, qualified people that have the capacity to make our division so much better for our children. So I'm really appreciative of that. I'm appreciative of the fact that we finally have had an opportunity to reach out to the public and say, you know, these activity fees that we've been charging as a short stop-gap measure to fill a void that was in the budget, that we are having an opportunity to be able to see the sunset on them. It still may take some time. We have to be very responsible in the way we do it. But parents have a myriad of different challenges for their children as they get ready to enter college and a variety of other activities that they get ready to participate in. And just an extra savings of $25 per sport is a significant impact on a lot of middle-class families that are trying to make ends meet. So I'm really excited about this budget, about going line by line. Those are some of the highlights of it. And I'm looking forward to working with Dr. Baker and the rest of the staff and also the board members that are assembled here to make sure that we can give our best effort to present to the Board of Supervisors reasons why we need to support this budget. With that being said, I turn over my time.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll just say ditto to what Mr. Braswell expressed so eloquently. And with that, I'll pass the microphone.
Mr. Laura.
Madam Chair, every week I celebrate Principal Appreciation Week, but this week is special because the Governor of Virginia has issued a certificate of recognition. I suspect every, no, actually, Dr. Baker told me that every one of our principals have received a copy of the certificate of recognition. And for those of you that don't have a copy of it, I'm not going to read the entire proclamation, but I'd simply like to highlight some of the words used here. But it's not often that I agree with the Governor. But this time, he's on target. And whoever wrote this for him did a great job. Because according to this document, "My principal inspire all members of the school staff and student body." In the second paragraph, they talk about the responsibility of managing the policies, regulations, and procedures necessary to ensure a safe and effective learning environment. And the third paragraph talks about the responsibilities of principals of guiding, directing, nurturing, mentoring, and imparting knowledge to our children. And they prepare students to be self-reliant and productive citizens. And finally, in the last paragraph, for the warehouses, it talks about ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. What an honorable profession. So, my congratulations. I see, I saw Mrs. Holmes here. Are there any other principals with us? There you go. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. And the Governor agrees with me on this. So this is pretty cool. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Ms. Grant.
I think we had a very productive work session this evening. We got a little more in-depth into the budget and what we are looking to provide for our staff and our students. And I think it's very efficient, and it's a good use of our funds that actually benefits our students primarily. And I would yield the floor with that.
Mr. Blaine.
Given the vagaries of the weather, I don't want to take but a minute other than to say we've made an outstanding start, I think, on our budget procedures. And we've had a session that we've just finished that was absolutely terrific, well-organized, and we accomplished a great deal. And I'd like to just pass on a comment I heard. One of my neighbors took time to call me. Had watched the last budget, the last budget presentation last week. And she had to call me and say, you know, Bill, I am so impressed with your superintendent and what he's been doing. So I thought I'd like to pass that on publicly, Mr. Superintendent, and know that you are appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Before I go on with my public comments, I just want to mention that we lost a student. So it's with much sadness that I ask for you to join me in a moment of silence for one of our Ny River Middle School students, Rowanna Hill, who passed away on Monday, January 12th. She will be greatly missed. Moment of silence, please. Thank you. Mr. Fottenhauer, I agree, kids first. And I believe that Dr. Baker's budget that he put together with the support of his staff is showing us that kids are first. So I want to say thank you again to Dr. Baker and his staff for putting that together with that in mind. As everyone said, we had our first budget work session today. And I'm just going to ditto what everyone said. It was wonderful. So thank you for all the hard work that you've put into it. And public comments. Dr. Baker, comments.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Very briefly, I just want to also thank the School Board for your support of where we are in the budget process, as well as our staff. And they have put a tremendous amount of work into putting us in a position to continue to be successful and to increase our effectiveness over time. And I know we're at the early stages, but one of the things I'm most impressed with throughout this process is just the sense of teamwork. And I think that extends beyond our staff and the board. It extends into our parent community and our community at large. And I think, as has been stated tonight, now that teamwork and that partnership now needs to extend to not only our local elected officials, but our folks in Richmond who are, their job is to put a budget in place that supports our children throughout the Commonwealth. And so I think that's a key part of what is to come. But thank you again for your continual support and look forward to the rest of the budget season. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto item 6.01, Board Committee Reports. Does anyone have any reports? Okay, well, since we're at that part, I'm going to just mention that no one contacted me about any changes that they wanted made for our committees from last year. So with that, we will continue with the same committees that we had last year. Okay, on to 7.01 and 02 and 03, Consent Item Agendas, Consent Agenda Items. Dr. Martin.
On the consent agenda this evening of the minutes of the January 12th, 2015 regular meeting, donations which are usual and customary, and the memorandum of agreement between Spotsylvania County Public Schools Head Start and Spotsylvania County Public Schools Office of Transportation. Staff ask that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Laura, a second by Dr. Meyer. Do we have any discussion? Okay, vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 6-0, with Mrs. Blalack absent. Okay, on to 8.01, Second Reading of Revisions to Policy GCBDF and GCBDA. Ms. Gaines.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairlady Shelley, School Board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. According to IRS regulations, employees are not permitted to make 403B contributions following the death of an employee, nor are employers permitted to make cash contributions in lieu of a 403B contribution. Thus, to comply with this law, staff is requesting second reading approval of revisions to policy GCBDF, staff annual leave, and policy GCBDA, staff sick leave.
Do I have a motion to that?
I will so move.
Mr. Blaine and Ms. Grant. Do we have any discussion? No? All those in favor of these two policies, say aye, please.
Aye.
6-0. Thank you. Ms. Gaines.
Yes. Cafeteria Change Funds were reestablished at the secondary level in 2011. And they are now being reestablished at the elementary level this school year. The Food Service Task Force is in support of this initiative. The staff is requesting second reading approval of revisions to policy DM, Cash in School Buildings.
I will move the recommended action.
Motion by Mr. Blaine, a second by Ms. Grant. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
6-0.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 8.03, Independent Reading Level. Ms. Finley and Ms. Balaico.
Good evening, Ms. Shelley, School Board members, Dr. Baker, Dr. Meyer. This evening, I will be presenting this item with Ms. Balaico, Director of Teaching and Learning. The Independent Reading Level Assessment, or IRLA, is a K-12 Unified Standards-Based Framework for student assessment, text leveling, curriculum, and instruction. It includes Common Core state standards for reading, both in literature and informational text, as well as key language standards. The IRLA is an American Reading Company proprietary leveling system and is trademark and copyright protected. The IRLA, along with supporting custom-designed text sets, exemplar packets, and hand-leveling book collections, both in English and in Spanish, can only be purchased through American Reading Company. If approved, the purchase of the IRLA program will assist the division in completing the following objectives. One, it will increase student time in text using authentic literature, trade books matched to each student's independent reading level. Two, it will build teacher capacity in understanding the development of reading and delivering expert reading instruction. Three, it will increase teacher skill in identifying individual student gaps in reading and strategically instructing students to accelerate reading progress. Program materials include: skill cards, folders, training material, hand-leveled book collections, custom-designed text sets, exemplar packets, and proprietary leveling systems. Professional developed products include introductory training sessions, site licenses, CCSS leadership institutes, and various training workshops. More specifically, this purchased, once approved, will include 150 book leveled classroom library for each K-12 classroom, excuse me, K-2 classroom, teacher materials to support ongoing formative assessment, conferencing with students, and targeted instruction, IRLA Independent Reading Level Assessment Conference Notebook Skill Cards, data management systems for progress monitoring, recording time spent in text, and measuring fidelity of the implementation through school pace. Professional development and a job-embedded model of elbow-to-elbow classroom coaching and mentoring throughout the implementation. At this time, staff requests that the School Board approve the sole-source purchase for the materials as described to include all division-wide future sole-source purchases from American Reading Company for IRLA products and services. The total of these purchases is estimated to be $70,878.20. I apologize, she's asking.
Nope. I just wanted to clarify for the board that this is a Title I initiative, and it will be for our Title I schools to use, and it's through Title I funds. It is not local funds.
And then, once again, I would like to thank you for allowing me to present this item. And Ms. Balaico and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Meyer, a second by Mr. Laura. Any questions, discussion? Ms. Grant.
Could you give us a little sense of the implementation and the training required and when it would be effective and so on?
Sure. Actually, I'd like to bring up Deb Sikurski, who is our Title I coordinator. And she can kind of give you the specifics. She worked with a vendor directly to get the professional learning opportunities in place.
Good evening. Just a little bit of background with this. This is an approved component of the Title I federal grant for Title I Part A. And essentially, purchasing the materials to support some kindergarten-through-second-grade classrooms with 150 books in the classroom, because we know that time in text is critical. The IRLA, which is mentioned here, is the Independent Reading Level Assessment. And that is specific to be very strategically driven to know exactly where the kids are in their independent reading levels. And that's really what it's designed for. The elbow-to-elbow professional development is that job-embedded piece where American Reading Company will have a coach that comes in and works by modeling for teachers and students in the classroom.
Do you see a need for additional parent educators or teachers to implement this, given, let's say, a school?
Well, the teachers receive the training, and then the reading specialists are also in the training to support the teachers. So when that person from the company is no longer there, that they carry on those pieces with the job-embedded professional development.
The reading specialist is our employee, though, right?
Oh, yes, absolutely. You're welcome.
Is this a one-time fee or a recurring fee?
It's one time.
One time, yes.
The current costs are estimated to be the $70,000 that I had mentioned, but this would also cover any additional materials that would need to be purchased at a later date. We do not have an estimate for those costs at this moment.
Mr. Braswell.
My question pertains to the employment of the materials, if approved. What schools are they earmarked for? And, you know, will it cover all the schools? Or are there specific ones that we're trying to target?
Right now, it's only for Title I schools. And we're starting with Harrison Road and doing that implementation. And then, as the Virginia Department of Education, with their approval with the federal grant, we would potentially expand that to the other Title I schools.
Any other questions? Dr. Baker.
Hello. Could you all just clarify so that later on, there's no confusion, given what's on the cover sheet relative to Common Core state standards? Just to clarify, because I know that that could later generate some confusion. We're not a Common Core state standard state. So could you just clarify what we're talking about there?
Absolutely. The Common Core standards, obviously, are for the majority of the nation. But the Independent Reading Level Assessment is correlated with the Virginia Standards of Learning. I think with the sole-source letter itself, it was just more global and related to Common Core. But we have a separate document that outlines the correlation to the Virginia Standards of Learning.
Madam Chair, call for the question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
6-0. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
8.04, First Reading of GCBF, GCBFR. Ms. Cobert.
Good evening, Madam Chair, to the members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. As a part of its budget development process, the School Board approved offering an Early Retirement Incentive Program for eligible employees who retire with Spotsylvania County Public Schools and with the Virginia Retirement System effective July 1 of 2015. The Early Retirement Incentive Program provides a financial incentive to all retirees who elect to participate in the retirement program per the provision of a 10-year retirement benefit. elect to participate in the retirement program per the provisions of the proposed policy and regulation. At this time, staff requests that the school board review the proposed policy and regulations, as well as the attachment, and approve it for a first reading as presented. Additionally, we request that the school board, for your consideration, would waive the second reading of the proposed policy, GCBF, and supporting regulation.
Madam Chair... Go ahead.
Mr. Blaine?
I will move that recommended action.
To...
On, if we may clarify what Ms. Colbert is asking, because our title says first reading approval, what we're really saying is...
We are voting for first and second.
First and second.
Second approval.
We're dispensing with the second reading and approving this evening, or the request to approve this evening.
Yes.
So, Mr. Blaine made a motion?
My question should reflect...
Okay.
And I'll second then.
And second by Dr. Meyer. Any discussion?
I think we should point out for the public that we had a work session, and part of the work session earlier this afternoon, or later this... Earlier this evening, late afternoon, we did take a look at the policy, and we had an opportunity to ask Ms. Colbert, you know, specific questions concerning the criteria. And so the recommendation is to approve as presented with that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. With no discussion, may I have the vote, please?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That's approved. Six-zero.
Thank you.
Items 8.05 is the first reading of the VSBA policies that are on... There are 16 VSBA policies that were received in October of 2014. We're looking at voting on these on block. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair. Second.
So a motion to vote on the VSBA policies with Dr. Meyer, and a second from Mr. Braswell. Is there any discussion? I want to just let the public know that we have received these policies in advance to look over and review. We're not going into this blind. We've had them for a little while to be able to review them. All those in favor of the policies?
Aye.
Aye. Vote, six-zero. Thank you. Now, we're on to 8.06, which is the first reading of the five-year cyclical policy. So it's every, every five years, we have to review our policies. So, once again, we've had these in advance, and we're looking at voting on them on block. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Dr. Meyer, to make a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Laura, second, thank you. And do we have any discussion? With not, we call for the vote. All those in favor of the 28-five-year cyclical policies?
Aye.
Six-zero. There, we have some informational items. Anything, Ms. 9.01 for Head Start? No? 9.02, Dr. Baker, anything for the next board meeting? Okay. Do we have, on to 10.01, any unfinished business? Okay. Eight point... I'm sorry, 10.01, 10.02, new business? Any new business? Okay.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt just one moment? I wanted to thank Dr. Martin for his assiduous effort in getting those cyclical things to us, and all the things that we've just been voting on. It took a lot of work to systematize it for us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine.
You're welcome.
For saying that, yes, Dr.
Madam Chair, may I add, thank you all so much, and we appreciate the... All the staff's work in getting those prepared, as well as your support. And also Patty Bowler, who worked so diligently with preparing the index manuals for us, as well as auditing the checklist that come in. So, definitely appreciate her assistance with all of that, as well as the rest of the staff in getting those done. Thank you.
Thank you. Shows great teamwork here in Spotsylvania County. Okay. Onto item 11.01. Be it resolved that the Board, School Board of Spotsylvania County, conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: to consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the Board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Mr. Blaine?
Second.
A second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are in closed session.[1376.83]